Mrs. Kramer?
Here.
Mrs. Lane?
Here.
Mrs. Rich?
Here.
Mrs. Gallagher? Mr. Krafcek?
Here.
Mr. Parsick?
Here.
The meeting is now open. Adequate notice of the meeting was provided by posting a copy of the time and place on the municipal clerk's bulletin board and mailing a copy of same to press and the Cape McHenry Herald on January 6, 2018. Will everyone please rise to salute the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we're going to open the meeting with our budget presentation. Get right into the heart of it. Okay, the change in our current fund expenditures. Change over last year, there's a reduction of $1,974,206. The breakdown for that is salaries and wages, overall increase of $82,594. The biggest reduction is in grants, $3,084,022. The biggest part of that is the resiliency grant that we anticipated last year. Statutory expenses such as pension increased $52,175. Special emergencies, reduction of $55,000. Change in our debt service, $460,209. Increase in paying cash for capital projects, $175,650. And changing capital improvement fund down payments of $140,000. And then general operating expenses, $254,188. For a net, again, of changes, $1,974,206. And the offsetting revenues, the same figure, a reduction of $1,974,000. Biggest part of that is the decrease in the grants. The change in the local tax levy, however, is $967,500. And if you look, this is the calculation for the 2% levy cap calculation. And we are actually under the 2% levy with our banking of $1,159,672. So basically, it's saying that you could have increased your levy additional $1,159,672, but we did not do that. Status on your spending caps. Again, the statutory 2.5% and then the cost of living increase was at 3.5%. Bottom line is, we are under by $621,887.97 that you could have increased your spending. Your local tax levy and assessed values. Our levy in 2018 proposed budget is $11,850,000. In 2017, it was $10,882,500 with a net change $967,500 or an increase of 8.89%. Local tax rate is proposed to stay the same at 24.5 cents. Your assessed value in 2018 went, increase of 9.5% and that's change of $401,558,400. And that is primarily due to the revow. Okay, condition of surplus. Prior year available was $2.6 million. Total available beginning of this year, $2.8 million, change of $185,083. Used in to fund the budget this year, $1,560,843, which is an increase of $65,379 over the prior year. Remaining balance, however, in the prior year was $1,125,000. Remaining balance this year will be $1,245,000, meaning that we have $119,704 more available surplus. Okay, regeneration of your surplus from 2016 versus 2017. Balance in '17, $2,620,000. Excess from operations, $1.6 million. Used in the budget, $1,495. Balance at the end of the year, $2.8 million. Percentage used in the budget was 59% in 2017 and 54% in '16. And you go to your tax rate. Where does Stone Harbor fall compared to the rest of the municipalities in Cape May County? You can see we are the fifth lowest tax rate, municipal tax rate. If you compare us to all of the shore communities, we are the second lowest. Avalon is at 22.6. This was as of last year. We are at 24.5 and we are proposed to stay at 24.5. Then when you add in your schools and your county, Stone Harbor actually has the lowest general tax rate of all the communities. Your percentage of tax collection continues to be very high. The current year, we were at 99.13. Prior year, 99.16%. We're using for reserve for uncollected taxes, 98.21% and that we have an excess of .92%. Okay, this slide just shows you the comparison of where your revenue comes from, the different categories, and the comparison of use amount anticipated this year versus last year. And you can see your primary source of revenue is your local municipal taxes. Your next biggest, if you exclude the grants, which they go up and down depending on what's available, the next available is your local revenues, which would be your permit fees, beach revenue, beach tags, those types of revenue. And then the use of surplus would be the next one. Then your appropriations, again, these are the categories comparing 2018 to 2017. Your biggest expense is your salaries, other expenses. And then your grants, which is, like I said, that one goes up and down. So then your next actually would be your debt service. And you can see the debt service comparison, the spike from 2017 into 2018. Okay, the summary for admin and finance. Total for administration and finances, up $41,111 or 1.36%. Other expenses was up slightly, $5,537 or .256%. Salaries were up $35,574 or 4.16%. And the most significant increase is in the construction due to retirement of one employee and hiring of a part-time code enforcement officer. And the functional areas that are covered under admin and finance include council administrator, municipal clerk's office, engineering and finance, your tax administration, which includes your collection and your assessment, your planning and zoning board, your legal services, your construction office, and the insurance, the medical, general liability, workers' comp, property and vehicle. And this chart shows you the percentages of the breakdown of expenses in admin and finance. And as you can see, the largest is in your insurance for medical and your liability insurance. And then the next biggest would be your administration at 23%. And you move on to public safety. The overall public safety budget is up $180,907 or 5.52%. OE is up $166,487 or 20.75%. Municipal court, public defender, fire code official and emergency management, other expenses remained flat. Aid to volunteer fire increased by $159,850. And this was due to an amendment to the stipend program approved by council last year. Salary and wages are up $14,420 or .58%. Dispatch interlocal agreement increased by $5,837 or 2%. And animal control is up slightly by $800. Okay, the function areas, police, fire, EMS, municipal court, including your public defender and prosecutor, your uniform fire code, office of emergency management, fire hydrant service, beach patrol and taggers, and animal control. And as you can see, the bulk of the expenditures are for police and dispatch. That's over 50%, clearly. The next biggest would be your beach patrol and taggers at 19% and fire EMS is at 17%. Okay, public work summary. Overall increase of $78,550 or 3.7% increase. Operating budget has an increase of $50,950 or 8.99%. Public works OE increased by $41,400 and the biggest increase was for the uniform service contracts. Solid waste, other expenses increased by $1,000. Buildings and grounds increased by $2,050 due to increases in service contracts and creating a line item for uniforms. Safety compliance increased by 2,100. Landfill fees increased by $4,400. And salary and wages increased by $27,600 or 1.8% due to contractual salaries. The functional areas for public works cover the Department of Public Works labor pool, solid waste, grounds, special events and safety compliance. And as you can see, the bulk of the expenditures, 58% is in your labor pool. And the next highest would be the solid waste expenses at 33%. And natural resources, this budget remained flat for 2018. Salaries of $25,000, which was moved from public works to natural resources two years ago, which better reflects the expenses associated with the bird sanctuary and the point maintenance, saw no increase and other expenses remained flat at $61,000. Okay, the functional areas include the preservation of the beach and dunes, the back bays, bird sanctuary and the point. And as you can see, no changes. The other expenses are at $61,000 and salaries are $25,000. Recreation and tourism saw an overall increase of $5,200 or 1.91%. Recreation increased by $200 or .1%, 10%. Tourism remained flat. Overall salaries and wages increased by $5,000 or 2.12%. Functional areas are recreation, tourism and the marina. And as you can see, recreational services is the biggest part of this at 59%. And then tourism is at 33%. Okay, at this point, I'll turn it over to Jim and he can finish the presentation.
Okay, excuse me. Debt service. Debt service is the annual principal and interest payment that we make. This year, the total is $4,096,559, which is an increase of $460,209 or 12.66% over last year. The increase was caused by a bond anticipation note, we call a ban. It's a one-year note. Last year, it was issued for $9.443 million and this year, at the end of 2017, rather, it was issued, no, for $19.5 million. And in this fall, we will finance, we will roll that ban into permanent financing. We have three different types of debt. We have general obligation loans. We have a 2006 issue, which has a million six outstanding and it matures at the end of this year. And we partially refunded that issue in 2016, which resulted in a savings of $84,000. We have a 2011 issue with 7.2 million outstanding. And the 2016 issue is the refunding part of the 2006 issue, also matures in 2018. We have NGEIT loans with 3.8 million outstanding. These bonds are issued by New Jersey Environmental Infrastructure Trust and they come with a AAA bond rating. We also have the bond anticipation note that I just mentioned of $19.5 million. Okay, debt. Debt is created when council passes a capital improvement ordinance. Each ordinance, each project contains a description of the project, the estimate life and the total cost. It also has to have a minimum of 5% down payment. The down payment is appropriated in the current fund under capital improvement fund on sheet 26. All capital projects that are anticipated are on sheet 40B of the budget. That is also online. This year's appropriation for the capital improvement fund is $350,000. Not all debt that is authorized is financed by serial bonds, NGEIT or bands. Sometimes we wait a few years before we issue any debt on the issue, on the obligation, on the, sorry, improvement, depending on how much cash we have. And the annual debt statement is filed by June 30th of every year. And it's a list of all debt that the borough has obligated itself to. All projects are also included, even the ones that are not funded by debt. The debt limit for all municipalities is 3.5% of the equalized, of the three-year equalized value. Stone Harbor could issue $150 million in debt. As of the end of 2017, the net debt for Stone Harbor was $36 million or .842%. Now, this chart shows maturing issue. The drop off in debt, and the green is the issue that we're going to go out in 2018. And the objective here is to keep the debt service level from year to year. So the 2018 issue will fill in the drop that's caused. And then in 2024, when the issue, when it drops again, we'll issue another debt in 2023. This is a partial list of the capital projects that are included in this year's budget. We have various road improvements for $4,080,000. Beach and bay, oh, I got the wrong one, I got the old one. Beach and bay improvements for $100,000. Trash and recycling truck for $230,000. Bulkheads at 114th Street for $400,000. ADA improvements and restroom renovation for $400,000. Beach tractor and loader for $160,000. Police equipment, vehicle and computer, $92,000. That is all paid for by cash in the operating budget. Building improvements in Borough Hall, $20,000. That too is all financed with cash. Beach patrol equipment stands and building improvement for $59,000. That too is financed with cash. And various public works improvements and items for $199,000 will all going to be financed with cash in this year's budget. The water sewer fund. The water sewer fund has an overall increase of $216,766 or 5.52%. There's an increase in other expense of $6,700 or 1.29%. The county MUA fee decreased $99,960 or 6.04%. Debt service increased $249,664 or 19.64%. Statutory charges remain the same and capital increased by $60,000. These are some of the functional areas of the water sewer. Sanitary sewer pumps, the water system, maintenance of the sanitary sewer state, pump stations, maintenance of the water system, the water tower and the wet wells, and collection of water and sewer rents. Surplus. Surplus this year, we're using $419,779. That's more than last year's amount of $320,513. However, at the end of 2017, we ended up with $950,369 surplus compared to December 31st, 2016, with a balance of $459,701. So after adoption of this budget, we will have a balance of surplus of $530,000, which is $390,000 more than the prior year. The rent figure, that bar represents 1.7 million. It's up slightly from last year. The sewer rents number is 1.82 million. It's up about $100,000 from the prior year. The fire hydrant service is the same. Miscellaneous revenue is up 250, I'm sorry, this amount is 250,000 and is up 60,000 and includes on and off fees, late fees, interest charges and et cetera. The appropriations. Again, other expense is 2.165 million. And the county MUA is the largest portion of that number at 1.55 million. And that bar is down slightly because, as mentioned earlier, the MUA fee is down. The other expense also includes chemicals, supplies, minor repairs and electricity used to run utility. Debt is, that bar represents 1.5 million, again, up $249,664 from last year. And that also is caused by the ban increase, the bond anticipation notes and interest on that. In 2021, there will be a decrease in water sewer debt service when there is a bond paid matures. And at that point, we'll reissue a new serial bond for the projects that we've accumulated, similar to what we're doing this year in the general capital fund. Capital this year, we are, it doesn't, it hardly shows it, but it's up $60,000 and, I'm sorry, up $80,000, no, it's up $60,000 to $80,000. And this is the first time we're starting to budget in the reoccurring capital items we're paying cash for in that fund. This is some of the, partial list of some of the capital projects included in the water sewer capital fund. Various infrastructure and road improvements for 1.6 million. Meter IRT upgrades for $200,000. Stormwater vaults and pipe installation for $100,000. Sewer camera for $98,000. Skater well and lift remote monitoring for $50,000. Outfall duct bill replacement for $30,000. Now, we don't need that. Okay, this chart shows the change for some random properties with the tax rate. So the, for this left column is the 27 assessed value. The 28 column is next to it for that similar property. And then the third column to the left is what the tax rate, I'm sorry, the tax levy on that property last year. And then the following column is the tax rate or the tax levy for that property in 2018 with the proposed tax rate. And then the following column is the change that property will see in the tax levy. And there's one large increase on that property, one property has a large increase of almost $2,500. But overall, all those properties see an average increase of $433.09 over last year with the proposed tax rate staying at 2.45 cents.
Okay, that concludes the presentation. If anyone wants to view this presentation or any additional financial information, they can go to the following link under finance. You'll be able to see prior year budgets, the annual financial statements, the annual debt statements and more detailed information of the line items for the budget. Thank you. Public hearing on the 2018 budget is now open. Anyone having questions, concerns, come up to the podium, state your name for the record. Seeing no one, public hearing is closed. Resolution 2018 S-56. We're pulling that resolution and not amending or adopting the budget. Correct. We cannot adopt this evening because the state aid figures for every municipality in the state has not been certified by the state yet. We should be getting that shortly and we should be able to actually adopt at the next council meeting. Okay, moving on. Any communications?
No, ma'am.
Public comment. Anyone wishing to address mayor and council may do so at this time by coming forward to the microphone stating your name and address for the record.
Bob Ashman, 10301 First Avenue. I, on the workshop discussion about the fairness of spreading that cost that Ray and Charles and Joan were talking about, I agree with their position. I think that makes sense. You know, that's a fair way to go. So I would encourage you to talk over that in your utilities or finance, whatever committee is having it. But that, that makes sense to me because we do that with everything else. We spread the basic cost of that. And, and one of those benefits of having all of that stuff needs to be done, done on time, is, is it increases the ratables. You know, our ratables went up 10% or more roughly, which puts more money back in the till. So it's a fair way to go.
Okay. Thank you, Bob. Anyone else want to address mayor and council? Seeing no one, I'll close public comment. Ordinance 1516.
Mayor and council, I'd like to make a motion that ordinance number 1516 be taken up on first reading.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Would the clerk read the title only of ordinance 1516 on first reading?
This adds, this adds a club license to our existing ordinance that we're permitted to instead of one. So I'd like to make a motion that ordinance 1516 be passed on first reading, published according to law. And that'd be taken up on second, third and final reading and adoption at a meeting of mayor and council to be held on the third at a meeting of mayor and council to be held on the third day of April 2018.
Second.
Any discussion? Clerk call the roll.
Mrs. Kramer?
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parzak?
Yes.
Ordinance 1517 for the bond ordinance, we'll be pulling that as well.
Yes, you need to pull that since the budget cannot get adopted. We cannot introduce the capital ordinance. That'll come back at the next council meeting also.
Thank you. Resolution 2018 S-57.
Madam Mayor, I offer a resolution S-57 for adoption.
Second.
This is to authorize disposal of surplus property on .gov. We only have three items. One is a military truck, a snowplow complete and a non-working air compressor. There's two of those.
Any discussion?
Just one question, the number one that we're getting rid of.
Mm-hmm.
Or we're not getting another one, right? Okay.
Not that I'm aware of.
Just curious.
Clerk call the roll.
Mrs. Kramer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lane?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parzak?
Yes.
Resolution 2018 S-58.
I'd like to offer a resolution 2018 S-58 for adoption.
Second.
Somebody second?
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry, didn't hear it.
I did, I'm sorry.
This is a resolution authorizing the fee for the Stone Harbor farmers market, which was, which is going to be set at $500 per space for the season.
Any discussion? Clerk call the roll.
Mrs. Kramer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lane?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parzak?
Yes.
Resolution 2018 S-59.
Mayor and council, I offer a resolution 2018 dash S dash 59 for adoption.
Second.
This, this resolution, based on the police chief's recommendation, appoints five special law enforcement officers, class two, to the Stone Harbor Police Department.
Any discussion? Clerk call the roll.
Mrs. Kramer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lane?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parzak?
Yes.
Resolution 2018 S-60.
I'd like to offer 2018 S-60 for adoption.
Second.
This is to award a professional service to Stockton. This has to do with this, the study that they're doing for flood prone areas in Stone Harbor. We are also being blessed that the POA, the Stone Harbor POA, is going to put $7,000 toward that. The total cost without that is $21,599.59. And once they make their very generous donation, or whatever it is called, it'll be a $14,599 cost to us and it's worthwhile. We've discussed this over and over again.
Any discussion? Clerk call the roll.
Mrs. Kramer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lane?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parzak?
Yes.
Resolution 2018 S-61.
Mayor and council, I'd like to offer a resolution 2018 dash S dash 61 for adoption.
Second.
This, this resolution is to provide a refund of $150 to property owners at 24904th Street to refund their rental registration fee and fire inspection.
Any discussion? Clerk call the roll.
Mrs. Kramer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lane?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parzak?
Yes.
Need a motion to approve one, two, three, four, five special events?
Do they all, excuse me for a moment, do they all have their insurance attached?
The ones I went through did, as I went through everything.
Did the wetlands?
Appears to be in order and everything is all signed off on by every one of the departments.
I didn't see the wetlands.
I didn't see the wetlands, that's why I raised them.
Not trying to be difficult, but I didn't see it, so.
Can we pass it with a stipulation they have to supply the insurance?
Provide that you'll approve it subject to them presenting.
I'd move that we approve these special events, subject to supplying all proper insurance and any other information as required by ordinance.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Need a motion to approve 20 beach tags for promotional purposes?
I have that motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have no items for discussion. May I have a motion approving the bills?
Madam Mayor, I move that the bill list be approved and we authorize the CFO to pay the bills when the funds are available and the vouchers properly endorsed.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? At this time, we're about to consider a resolution to go in the private session. We would appreciate if you would all remain seated until the resolution has been acted upon. At the conclusion of the private session, we will come back into public session for the purpose of either taking action as a result of our discussion in private session or simply adjourn. It is also possible that someone might bring up some other item of business in public session after we come back from private session. Resolution 2018 S-62.
Madam Mayor, I offer a resolution 2018 S-62 for adoption.
Second. Clerk call the roll.
Mrs. Kramer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lane?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parzak?
Yes.
And for the record, we're going into closed session to discuss matters of possible litigation and...
Contract negotiation.
Contract negotiation. Okay.